Have everyone's attention, I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting for April 26, 2016, to order. I'm Kevin Jeffries, Chairman. Welcome, everyone, here. And if you would, if you have a cellphone with you, please either turn it off or turn it on vibrate so that it doesn't interfere with the cameras and the audio here in the courtroom. So, before we get started, if you would, please join me for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we do the approval of the minutes, I'd like to make an introduction here quickly this morning. We have Mr. J.W. Neal, our newest member of the Planning Commission. He is an appointee for the city of LaGrange. So, welcome, Mr. Neal. Looking forward to working with you. So, all right, with that, if you would, Commissioners, let's look at our minutes and see if we have any additions or corrections we need to make. And I'd just like to thank Ms. Fox for putting these together. We had a very long meeting last month, and as you can tell from the minutes, a lot of information was covered here. So, Ms. Fox, thank you for putting these together and did a nice job. So, with that, Commissioners, is there any additions or corrections we need to make to the minutes from March 22nd? Any additions or corrections?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, have a motion to approve the minutes as mailed. Do we have a second? Kevin Mesker, seconds. All right, any discussion? Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, we will now just do a voice vote on approving the minutes from March 22, 2016, Planning Commission meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, no. Minutes have been approved. All right, with that, let's get the staff sworn in before we get started with our first docketed item, please. Ms. Fox?
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, with that, Ms. Alvey, I believe you, well, let me ask Ms. Fox to read the first docketed item, please.
Docket PZ-16-013, app-
We should put in the record-
Oh, okay, sorry.
That we, the applicant has asked us to table them till next month.
Do we need official motion to table?
I think you should.
Yes.
Okay.
It would be preferable.
All right.
Can you repeat that again? I didn't hear that clearly.
Yeah, our first two docketed items have been pulled, have been requested to be tabled until our next, our meeting next month. They didn't have all the information together for docket PZ-16011 and PZ-16012. So, if I could, could I get a-
So, for the benefit of anybody in the audience or anybody listening that is wondering about what the case is, it's for a re, a zoning map amendment and a development plan review on property located at 203 East Washington Street in LaGrange.
Okay. All right, with that, could I get a motion to table these two docketed items?
Sure.
Okay, have a second?
Sure.
Okay, that's non-debatable, non-amendable. It comes to immediate vote. All those in favor of docket, of tabling dockets PZ-16011 and PZ-16012 until our regularly scheduled meeting next month in May, signify by saying aye. All opposed, no. Okay, those two docketed items have been tabled. All right, now, with that, I'll ask Ms. Fox then if she would read the first docketed item or the next docketed item, please.
PZ-16-013, application has been filed by Liberty Development Group for a waiver to allow residential use in an industrially zoned district for property located at 4450 Old LaGrange Road, Buckner. The zoning is I-2 heavy industrial.
All right, and with that, I'll ask Ms. Alvey if she will now present the docket, please.
Sure will. Good morning, everyone. Amy Alvey with Oldham County Planning and Development. As Ms. Fox stated, this is an application for a waiver to allow residential use in an industrial zone district for property located at 4450 Old LaGrange Road. The property is zoned I-2 heavy industrial and is approximately 1.2 acres. This is an area view, and again, the red lines are not survey lines. This is a good example that shows that our GIS is not survey quality. It is just an overlay of the mappings. This gives you an overlay of the buildings are in gray, and then the hashed area is the parking areas gravel and pavement for drives. This is an area view, I'm, yeah, aerial view of the property on Old LaGrange Road. This is the current zoning. It shows that the current zoning is I-2. You have some R-2 to the north, and then the rest surrounding is I-2 heavy industrial. History on the property, there's been no actions before the Planning Commission regarding this property, but there was a minor plat that was approved and recorded in February of 2006 that created three lots from one. This gives a better ideal of the part of the minor plat that shows the division which created this lot with the building on it. You'll see that the left side yard there is 21.2 feet, and then this is 24.62 feet. So, it gives you a better orientation of the building on the lot. This is the east view looking along Old LaGrange Road. This is the west view going towards Crestwood. This is the adjoining property owner to the north. This is the adjoining property owner to the south. This is the adjoining property which is to the west, which is across the railroad tracks, which is the residential homes that are along 146. This is a view of the left wing of the building. This is a view of the center portion that will, the applicant is requesting to be part of the residential living space. This is the view of the right wing of the building. This is a view into the rear of the property, from the side parking area. These were the renderings that the applicant included with his presentate, or with his application that just shows what the finished product would look like. The building is approximately 9,507 square feet, which is currently used to store classic cars. The applicant is proposing to convert 2,800 square feet into living space for himself and four children. The first floor would have four bedrooms and one bath. The second floor would have a master bedroom, a kitchen, living room, and computer room. This is the floor plan. This is the first floor, which shows the bathroom there, highlighted in purple, and then the blue four squares are the four bedrooms. And then the second floor, it shows the master bedroom with the kitchen and living area and computer room on the second floor. And again, the property is zoned I-2 residential. There are other residential properties along Old LaGrange Road. Previously, we had tiered zoning, which allowed anything in a lower zoning category to be as a permitted use. So, that is why you'll see some residential uses along Old LaGrange Road. We no longer have tiered zoning. So, if you had something, if you had I-2 property and you wanted to do something that was in C-1, C-2, or C-3, or even in the residential zones, it was a permitted use previously. But when the zoning ordinance was updated, I believe in 2007, that tiered zoning went away. And so, and this one's kind of a mixed use because the applicant is proposing to have residential use and still keep some of the non-residential use on the same property. And that is all that I have.
All righty, Ms. Alvey, thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff on this docketed item? Mr. McWilliams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Amy, you referred to the photographs in our packets as renderings.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm gonna possibly show my ignorance, which is not hard, but renderings are an example, not necessarily the way it's truly gonna look. So, is that indeed, as I looked through those, I thought, yes, these are renderings. This is not how it may look.
Correct. The applicant submitted with his application, and I included in your packets, some examples of the living spaces and what that would look like. You may ask the applicant if he has more detailed design. This is, in this presentation, I just put what the exterior would look like.
Right.
But the applicant may be able to answer more of the design details for you.
Thanks. Mr. Urban?
The facade may be a rendering, but the floor plan is the proposed floor plan. That's not a example. That's what they're proposing to actually construct.
Yes, sir.
And, Ms. Alvey, on this, the building that's shown here is, part of it will be proposed, if it's approved, would be residential, which is 2,800 square feet, and then the balance would be, remain as what it's being used for now?
Correct, correct.
But the zoning would be changed on the whole lot, so it would be-
No, this is not a zoning change.
I'm sorry.
This is just a residential use waiver.
Oh, I see, right.
To have just this section here as living space. Then, everything here in blue will remain the I, remain, the zoning will remain the same.
Okay.
The use will be non-residential use.
Okay, and the other zonings in the area, or at least, I did see you showed a few homes or whatever, but the majority of this purple is, is all I-2?
Yes, everything that's, that is along Old LaGrange Road is zoned I-2 heavy industrial.
All right, any additional questions for staff, Commissioners? Yes, sir, Dr. Arvin.
Help me understand the waiver part of it. I understand there's no zoning change. Is the waiver just for the applicant? Should the, should he sell the property later? Would that waiver go with the sale of that property?
Yes, the waiver will remain with the property. The waiver is just to allow him to have residential use in an industrial zone district. Because residential uses are not allowed in our current zoning ordinance. Previously, it was allowed when we had tiered zoning. So, he is asking for the residential waiver to have just a portion of the building be allowed for residential use with the remaining of it non-residential. And that will stay with the property.
Thank you.
Mr. McWilliams.
Sorry, one more question. Is there, are there any rules, regulations, policies, and procedures that are applicable to a residential waiver that would be different than just any other waiver? Is a waiver, a waiver, a waiver, or because it's a residential waiver, which we do waivers all the time?
Right. A waiver is a waiver of a particular portion of the regulation. A variance is dimensional. A waiver is to waive that regulation portion. So, what you're being asked today is to have, to waive the portion that says that residential uses are not a permitted use, to allow it as a permitted use.
Well, the criteria applies, just like everything-
Yes, sir.
Well, the only other thing, when they go to construct, building code comes into play.
Yes, sir.
Not in the, in the case of the waiver.
Correct.
So, that's, that's not in our-
So, the only other rule, regulation procedure is building codes. So, they'd have to have fire separation and make sure they met the codes to have those dual uses.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any additional questions for staff? All right, seen, seen none. We'll move into the presentation by the applicant or representative and others in support of the application. You have 50 minutes. And we'd like to get you sworn in, and then we'll get your name and address when you make your presentation.
Sure.
Ms. Fox?
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do. Hello, I'm Robert Liberty. I'm the owner of 9/11 Sports Cars and Liberty Development Group. This is my attorney, Louis Winter, who's representing me today on, on this project, this exciting project.
Okay, you can proceed.
Okay, my name is Louis Winter again. My address is 462 South Forest Street, Suite 101, Louisville, Kentucky, 40202. My client, Liberty Development Group, is, as this panel is aware, attempting to convert 2,800 square feet so that-
Speak up just a little bit.
So, that him and his children can reside in this building. There are, he has four children, and they would like to use this as a residential place. It looks to be professionally done. It would have, to my understanding, very little impact on the surrounding areas. There is residential to the north and south already, and that's it. So, thank you.
As it relates to my project, I think it's an exciting project for Oldham County. Obviously, it's something that's different in Oldham County, but it's not different as it relates to other parts of the country. A good friend of mine, who is also into classic Porsches like myself, has a very similar warehouse, just a little larger. It's 100,000 square foot, located in Los Angeles, California. And also, I'm sure everybody's aware of Jay Leno. Jay Leno lives in his warehouse as well. And if you all know Jackie Chan, if you're a fan of movies, Jackie Chan in Tokyo has two warehouses, very similar in construction style. Unfortunately, theirs are much larger than mine. Mine's much smaller. But regardless, I think that the size of this space is, is perfect. Currently, the space is, has had significant improvements since I purchased it. I don't know if you all remember the old Cat Tech building, but it was an eyesore. Since I bought it a year ago, I've made some significant improvements. My intent when I purchased the building was not only to operate as a storage facility and a classic car operation, but in addition to that, was to move into it with my family. And as time progressed and as improvements were made, we made some exceptional progress, and now we're to the point where it's time to pull permits and do things the right way. All my plans, which have been submitted with Amy, they're all done by Barry Prindle Architects. Everything has been done appropriately, submitted to Mark, so Mark can in turn assess code regulation to ensure that not only is the building up to code, but in addition, that extremely safe for me and my family. And I just think it's gonna be a great draw for the community. I really do. I, I travel around the country. I've got friends in this particular industry all over the world, and this is gonna be an exciting opportunity, not just for me and my family, but it's also gonna be an exciting opportunity for Oldham County.
Excellent.
Does that completes your presentation?
That completes the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, all right. With that, is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of the application? Is there anyone here to speak in support of?
Can I make one note? I went around and I actually met with all the adjoining property owners, and if you notice, it should be in the packet. I had them sign, explaining what I did, and had them sign and endorse this particular project. And the overall feel from all the adjoining property owners, other than three who you couldn't get in touch with because they couldn't be found, were that, one, they appreciate and are excited about the project. They like the improvements that have been made thus far, and they're excited to see additional improvements because all of them said the same thing. They feel like it's gonna assist in their property values increasing. So, nonetheless, pretty exciting times, and I've gotten a lot of support from the adjoining neighbors.
Okay, all right. Is, with that, then, I assume you said your presentation was completed?
Correct.
Okay, let me then move into testimony and questioning by those opposing the application. Are there any folks here that, that are opposed to this application? Seen, seen none. We will now open it up for questionings of the applicant and those opposing of the application by the commission, Commissioners. Do you, yes, Ms. Crosby?
You may as well come back. As I looked at the, the layout that you have for the, the building itself, while I can appreciate that, you asking for 2,800 square foot of living area?
Uh-huh.
And one bathroom for five people?
It's, you know, my, the bathroom's 15 by 13. It's huge.
Oh, it's big. It's huge.
And the other four individuals are my four children, and my, I'm, I'm in the process of finalizing or working through a divorce, and so I'm only gonna have my kids 50% of the time. However, I will tell you this, after meeting with my architect this past week, we feel that we might sneak another bathroom up on the second floor. I've got plenty of space in my master bedroom area to put in an additional half-bath, and I think I'm gonna put an additional half-bath upstairs, just because I don't know if I wanna walk up and down steps every time I have to use the restroom.
I suggest you do.
But nonetheless, the bathroom is extremely huge. If you look at the updated plan that I submitted yesterday, you know, the bathroom is much larger. It's got three sinks instead of two, and it's, it's, it's perf, it will definitely accommodate the needs of myself and my four kids. As I said, I'm only gonna have my kids 50% of the time. The other 50% of the time, it's just gonna be me there living and also working, since it's gonna be considered mixed use. But I do think I might put another half-bath upstairs. I think, I think it might not be a bad idea.
Mr. Liberty, I, before, let me, before you continue, is, are those plans you said you submitted yesterday?
Yeah, this is the final plan that, from Barry Prindle, that has all the code regulation associated with it. So, when it-
That's what'll be submitted with his building permit application.
Right.
Okay.
The floor plan is basically the same.
It's exactly the same.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
But this is the more detailed plan, where we're talking about the, you know, the fire retardant wall that's associated with the space to obviously segregate the living space from the additional warehouse space, and just some other odds and ends. Everything's pretty much the same. This is just a lot more detailed than this is for Mark.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't a major change from what you had submitted to us.
Not at all.
You know, to, to that plan.
No, this is, everything that you see there is exactly, other than a sink, everything that you see there is exactly the same.
Okay.
This is a little bit more detailed.
Excuse me for interrupting, Crosby, but-
That was, that was-
Okay, okay. Any additional questions for the applicant? I, yeah, go ahead, Mr. McWilliams.
I concur with Ms. Crosby's suggestion for a second floor bathroom. I don't know how many girls that you have, but as a father of three girls, the grandfather of four girls and a wife, no sex.
Sure, no. No worries at all. I think we're gonna put a second floor bathroom in, just so that way when I have guests-
I realize that has absolutely nothing to do with us.
Right.
That's correct, yeah. I was getting ready to-
The chairman was getting ready to nail me for testimony.
At the same time, obviously, if any of you all wanna visit and you all wanna have a cold beer, we need a bathroom upstairs, just in case you maybe have one or two many beers.
I have a question for staff or whatever. Little concern about, you know, the area is all I-1 or I-2 industrially zoned. Mr. Urban, I guess, or, or Ms. Alvey, you know, are we, you know, what problems could we create if we do this waiver as far as the additional, the adjoining properties there and whatever? I mean, is this an issue that, you know, we're giving up, you know, and, well, we're not giving up, we're not changing the zoning, but, I mean, is, is it, will it create a problem down the road if he decides to sell this, or, you know, is there any issues that you see there?
Only if you determine there are gonna be a problem. I mean, I, we can't predict the future, but-
Right.
I think there are some adjoining residential uses in the industrial park, and they, they could easily get converted over to an industrial use. So, the question is whether it is appropriate to maintain or continue or, or actually expand residential uses in the industrial park.
Right.
Just put the zoning map back up. I mean, it-
So, all of the, the purple is, is all I-2, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So, with this waiver, we would be allowing residential, basically right in the center of that industrially zoned property, correct?
Correct.
Which is also residential properties along, in that I-2 zoning already.
Right, but that was done back when we had the-
Tiered zoning.
Tiered zoning, correct.
Mm-hmm. This, if you see this property here, that is used for residential purposes through ministries.
What the, can you show us on the map where that house is in relation to where this property is?
It's right here. If you look at the small square at the bottom, that's highlighted in blue, that's the adjoining property. And then if you look at this one, which is, the map's not correct, but it's, it's on the, it's right here.
Okay.
It's another house.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, what, what answer did you get to your question? I'm sorry, I must not have been paying attention.
Well, as far as the-
Is it, does it create a problem down the road if we do that?
Well, that's what, that's what I was asking staff, so.
Well, this, again, is basically, since tiered zoning has been removed from the zoning ordinance in '07, this would be an expansion of residential uses in the industrial area, and that's the only thing I can tell you. I don't know if it creates a problem. I can't see the future. I, I can't tell you why it would or wouldn't.
I just wanted to make sure and get clarification from staff, you know, if they saw that as, you know, as an issue or potential issue, you know, because if we give up, you know, if we have residential property there in, with industrial all the way around it, you know, there's potential for conflict between uses and whatever down the road if he sells the property, if and when, and, you know, those kinda things.
And it is a mixed use. It's not solely residential, so keep that in mind as well.
True. Okay, Mr. Fanny?
In, in giving this a waiver for residential, does the property then have to, or, or does it already meet the setback requirements, boundaries, and things like this of a residential property? It looks like to me that I'm wanting-
Well, not residential, no. It would be, it's zoned industrial. So, the setbacks that apply are industrial. However, I, you know, Amy showed you a picture of the setbacks, and those were in place, the, the building was there for a long time. Whatever the setbacks requirements were, when the building was built, it met those requirements.
Changing it to residential for that section does not change that?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's still zoned industrial.
Okay. All right, any additional questions? Yes, Mr. Horton?
Thank you. Excuse me. Ms. Alvey, in the past, in the past years or so, we have done what I've sort of called downzoning in industrial areas for a residence in a area. The difference here is we downzoned, is that correct, for maybe those properties, and this is just a waiver in this industrial area?
Well, the, the other ones that you saw, those were not zoning changes. Anytime you have a residential use waiver to allow residential uses in an industrial zone is not a zoning change. It's just to allow that use to be in that zoning classification. So, there is no rezoning, so-
Was that called a waiver then?
It is a waiver.
Okay, so that-
But we have seen different cases. On Finley Mill Road, there was a downzoning from industrial because a person wanted to build a house and not have it any industrial use whatsoever. Whatever street that is-
146, out on 146.
Yeah, Singleton Lane, that was a waiver because the lots had been used for residential, but it was zoned industrial, going back to the beginning of zoning in the county, adjoining a rail line. So, those were waived. So, that's what the case is today, waiving that requirement to allow for the residential occupancy.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Alvey. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Arvin?
I understand that you use the property now for a warehouse for classic cars?
Yes.
And I interpreted from some of your remarks that your intention is to, to build that into a place where you would charge admission for people to come and see the collection?
No, I won't charge admission for anybody to come see the collection, absolutely not. No, I've got, man, you know, that's a great road. It's a busy road, a lot of bikers, a lot of runners, a lot of walkers, ever since they implemented the new walking bridge right at Exit 17. And a lot of times when I'm there, on the weekends with my kids, I have to actually lock the gates and act like I'm closed, 'cause I can't get anything done, 'cause everybody wants to pop in and see what I got in the warehouse.
Okay.
But, no, I will never charge admission for individuals to come in and enjoy the cars. I'm looking forward for people coming in and enjoying the automobiles and enjoying the fellowship that's associated with the entire facility.
Thank you.
Yeah, no worries.
All right, any additional questions? Yes, sir. Douglas?
This is probably for staff. As far as this being a warehouse and industrial, and in the past, I guess this was Caltech, environmentally safe as a residential use, do you guys feel comfortable and staff that this is being converted, or part of this is being converted to residential?
Well, it has to meet building codes for that.
I understand that building codes, but I mean, environmentally safe because there's vehicles in this warehouse, the vehicles will be housed in this. So, do you feel comfortable in staff realizing that this is gonna be a mixed use?
Well, you're kinda putting me on the spot to determine and tell you, and answer. Well, I, I don't know if environmentally safe, are you talking about fuel and whatever else, because those exist in a residential garage?
Exactly.
And there's fire separation. So, the only way I can answer that question is related to building codes. That's the only thing I can tell you. It, it has to meet building codes for fire separation, access to fresh air, egress, and if it, if it, he submits plans with a building permit that meet the building codes, then that's the only safety valve, I guess, that you're looking for.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Any additional questions? All right, seen none. So, let's, we didn't have anybody for opposition that were opposing the application. So, do you have, Mr. Liberty, do you have a final statement you'd like to make?
I'm, just to address your concern, prior to me per- Just to address your concern, prior to me purchasing the building, I had, obviously, the, the property tested for any type of issues, because I didn't want to buy a building and then later down the road find out that I have to dig up all the soil and have it exchanged for fresh soil. So based off of that particular comment, there's no hazardous issues whatsoever associated with the ground or the property. You know, Cat Tech, they used to clean, or they still do, I guess, industrial areas. They didn't handle hazardous materials. In addition to that, in the past at Cat Tech, there was a, a wash bay in the back that was a, a self-contained OSHA-PRO wash bay. All that's been removed. That's no longer there. I had all that removed and cut up and scrapped and gone. You know, other than a little bit of gasoline, which is good for the soul, and a little bit of antifreeze, and my kids, I promise they don't eat antifreeze or drink it. They're not raccoons. Other than that, there's really no safety issues or safety hazards. When it comes to the fire safety that Jim brought up, we, we actually went a little overboard on the firewall. Talking to Mark, we were able to institute just 5/8 drywall, but we're taking it to where it's a two-hour burn time instead of a one-hour burn time, since my children are gonna be there. That's a little bit more beefy than what's required, because we were right on the edge. And what we did is we decided to err to the side of caution instead of try to be cheap and try to do it the inexpensive way. So everything we're doing is above board.
Yes, sir.
Guess there's a technical question here. On the proposed conditions of approval, said the waiver shall apply only to the plan reviewed at this particular public hearing. If you, if he should decide to put in the upstairs second bathroom, that would be something looked at later through the, through the, I mean, through the office, through Jim's office, and, and he'll go through a procedure of adding that. Is, is that correct? In other words, we, we look at the plan as he has proposed it, and then should he decide? That's his problem to figure out how to add that bathroom?
Yes. I, I think the real subject matter is the residential use, not whether he's got one or two bathrooms. There's no building code that says he has to have more than one.
I was worried about, you know, if this were approved here, that the plan would be locked in, and then should he decide to add that, what kind of procedure would he have to go through other than a normal one?
Building, building permits.
Fine. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
All right. With that, is that your final statement, Mr. Liberty?
That's my final statement. Thanks, guys. I appreciate it.
With that, docket PZ 16013 is now closed, and I will ask Mr. Urban and Mr. Carter if they would outline what's being requested. I think it's a fairly simple request, and, but I'll ask them to outline any issues that we would have.
The, and as always in your staff report on the second page, you have proposed motions, either in favor or denial of the waiver, and reasons why. You have to actually state the reasons, whether you're approving it or denying it. And the only condition that I've heard is that it just comply with the plan that was reviewed at this meeting today. I didn't hear any other stipulations on your side in terms of a condition of approval.
All right. Mr. Carter, anything that you need to add?
Nothing.
Okay. With that, the chair would now entertain a motion on docket PZ 16013, and then we all open it up for discussion. We'll get a motion in a second. Yes, sir. Mr. McWilliams?
Somebody else? Jordan, has he seen? No, I would think so.
Doesn't matter to the chair, whichever one would like to...
I'll, I'll give a...
Jordan, should I?
Okay.
I'll, I'll give you a second.
We'll find out, and if this isn't any good, it's back to you. I'd like a motion to approve the waiver. The design, the strict compliance may, would be a difficulty for him. It's, is a unique design. It'll achieve the objectives, certainly there's no neighborhood objections. In fact, there are written support by all of the contiguous properties, it appears. Development's unique. It is not in conflict with anything that I can find in the comprehensive plan, and it, it is not, it is somewhat, it's not unlike other waivers that we've done in the past in these areas.
Okay. Mr. Carter, is that an adequate motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. McWilliams, seconds? All right.